Noted that George Klein and Larry Larson are absent. I'm calling for a nomination from the board for President Pro Tem.
I would move that Joe Cawthorn be President for tonight? Is that the question?
Yeah, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we need a roll call vote on this?
Do you?
No.
No?
It's just a motion.
Just the motion, okay, there you go.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you say roll call?
No, I said no roll call.
Oh, okay.
All in favor?
Oh, this is gonna go good tonight.
Aye.
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 You're in.
I guess I didn't.
Unless you want it, Mark.
Yeah.
You want it?
Yeah, it's real good, yeah.
I'll flip you for it.
Right. Okay, first order of business is to review improvements from the regular board meeting of March 25, 2008, and the reorganization meeting of April 15, 2008. So, Chair would entertain a motion for each one of those.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting from Tuesday, March 25, 2008.
Also second?
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of March 25, 2008. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Also need a motion to approve the reorg meeting of April 15, 2008. That is also in your packet. Excellent back.
I move approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, April 15, 2008, reorganizational meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the reorganization meeting of the meeting, excuse me, the minutes from the reorg meeting of April 15, 2008. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. At this time, you know, I see a few visitors here. If there are, this is a normal time when we have comments from the floor. If there's people here as guests, if you'd like to step to the podium and state your name and address and make some comments, feel free to do so. If not, we'll commence with that and move on. Anybody? Okay, the Chair, what we need to do is have a motion to open the public hearing on special assessments for Summers Landing Road, Station Circle North, and Station Lane North road improvements. We're going to have an engineer's report, public comments, and then we'll have to go into a closed public hearing on special assessments, but we do need a motion to go into public hearing on this, so the Chair would entertain that motion. Okay, we have a motion from Mark Zappa to open the public hearing on special assessments. Go ahead, second? Second. Second by Jim Thomas. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of opening the public hearing on special assessments signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign. Motion is carried.
We are now open for the public hearing on special assessments. I'll turn that over to Kevin Liam from Cedar Corporation.
Thank you. I guess we're at that stage where we're looking at closing out the Station, Station Lane, Station Circle, and Summers Landing Road. We do have to go through the public hearing process because the cost came in a little bit higher than what the preliminary assessment report was generated. I do have additional copies if anybody else in the audience would need any of those, but I'll just believe all the members of the board has a copy of my assessment report. Just go through it. Couple items. Basically, it's about a 3,000 linear feet of roadway reconstruction, St. Croix Station project. Just to revisit some of the items that were accessible was a street reconstruction. It was over 20 years, so according to the policy, that's 50-50 split. 50% would be the village's share and 50% of the benefiting property owners. There was one culvert replacement, part of the policy there. The village would pick up the full cost for that. So on page two, it just highlights, you know, the two different assessments for the project. If you turn to page number four, gives you a way out of all the properties that were affected as part of the project. There were 28 parcels. Some of them were full assessment, some weren't, just because we didn't go along the whole frontage of some of the properties. That's why we end up with not an even per unit basis. If you look at page item or page number five, that gives you a cost summary of how everything, all the costs came in. Street reconstruct, $134,193.80. Culvert pipe replacement of $1,350 for a total construction cost of $135,543.80. And then when you add in the engineering and admin of $13,363.03, you came up with a total project cost of $48,906.83. And when you compare that to the preliminary, we had a dollar number of $147,510, so there's a difference of just under $1400, $1400 once everything was completed. Item, page number six, just gives you an idea of, you know, based on how much each parcel is going to be assessed, what they can defer it out, you know, two years, six years, whatever it ends up being, and I'll get into that on Schedule C. At the bottom there, just a little more breakdown in between the street reconstruction, what those costs were. And then page number seven, we talked about before, we had 26.21 units, and when you divide that cost out, total cost by those units, each per lot basis was $2,812.36. And then down below that gives you an idea of cost sharing summary. Talked about before, street was 50-50 split, and the culvert replacement would be village cost. Some of those dollars for the village itself are going to be offset by a local road improvement program. Some grant dollars was allocated towards that project, and the village is going to receive $24,244 between those two dollars that were allocated as part of the project, so. And then page number nine is Schedule C. That breaks out all the different parcels, benefiting parcels, as part of the project. And as you can see, that's where we came up with the $2,800, $2,812.36. You compare that to the preliminary assessment report, those numbers were $2,777.60, so there's difference of just under $35 per parcel is what, when you.
Why we're having this meeting.
Yes, yep, just because they did come in a little bit higher. And then, once you get into page 12, that just is a more detailed breakdown. When you look at all the items that was part of the construction, I won't go into all those, but if you wanted to take a look at that, I'll give you an idea of what took place of the project. And then the rest of the items is the preliminary resolution along with the public hearing notices that went in the papers, so. Open that up to any questions that any of the village board members would have, otherwise we turn it over to the public.
One question that I have, it's not a question, it's just so that we mention it. And it looks like most people there are going to be owing $2,812.36 at a maximum, and I think there's maybe two or four lots that are less than that, something like that. So according to page six, it looks like people that are paying that maximum amount will have up to six years to pay that assessment off through the village. Now, I guess my question is, what happens between now and the end of the year? Are we going to send out an assessment notice to the people? I guess that's a question I have for Gloria. Will people be receiving in the mail their bill?
By approving this resolution here, there will be, there's language in here which includes the payment policy that states that they can either, said assessments shall be due and payable by October 25, 2008. Any property owner subject to such assessment may, within 30 days after mailing a copy of this resolution, file with a clerk a written election to pay the assessment principal as determined below. And then you can buy on January 31st, the reason October 25th is so you could get it on the tax roll, and then it would become the six years, so you can pay it.
Okay, you can pay it.
Upfront.
Okay, you can pay it upfront.
You can pay it all on January 31st on your tax bill.
Oh, you can, okay.
Or you can have it.
Pay it up as a portion. But do the homeowners notify you as to what they want to do prior to you, prior to October? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. After this resolution is approved, I'd be mailing out payment options.
Okay.
I think, just so that's clear with everybody, as to when the payment is expected and how to either get it extended or to say they're going to pay it off so it shows up on their assessment.
Seems very clear.
Kevin, I believe that there was a question that some equipment damaged the surface of the roadway and possibly some of the final payment was retained until that roadway was either repaired or a resolution was come to. Where did that end up?
I mean, we took a look at that during, you know, the final walkthrough as part of the project, and I guess we didn't notice anything out of the ordinary for any, you know, damages to the surface course.
Okay.
So.
Wonderful, sounds good to me. So at this point, are you looking for a motion to approve this?
Well, I guess we need, we got the engineer's report and we got questions from the floor, from the board. If there's questions from the floor, or any comments from the floor at this time, this is, now is the time to make them. Hearing none, I guess what we would do is we would.
Move out of the public hearing.
Yeah, move out of the public hearing.
I'll move.
Second? Okay, the motion has been made to close the public hearing on special assessments. Motion by Mark Zappa, second by Jim Thomas. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion is carried. So we should have next, the final resolution in here. Looking for it here. Is that on page 14 of your special assessment?
X.
Is that resolution number 200705 or?
No, keep going, it's.
Oh, 2008, sorry.
2008.
This is, okay. We should probably have somebody from Public Works introduce the following resolution and move its adoption, and since I'm the officiating chairperson, I'll either ask Sandra or Mark to be the trustee to do that. So trustee Mark Zappa introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption, and that's resolution number 200805. Should I read that, what's in bold here? Does that make any sense?
Chief, it counts.
I might as well take less time than thinking about it. Final resolution authorizing street improvements and leveling, levying special assessments against benefited properties on Station Lane, beginning approximately 200 feet north of the intersection of Summers Landing Road North, then northerly to Station Circle North. Station Circle North from Station Lane North to Summers Landing North, Summers Landing Road North. Summers Landing Road North from Station Circle North to approximately 150 feet west of Pine View North, Village of North Hudson, St. Croix County, Wisconsin. And it essentially allows us to assess those property owners based on the final assessment that Kevin has given the board from Cedar Corporation. Is there any question about this resolution or any comments from the board at this time?
No.
If not, we'll take it up to a vote. Do we need to do a roll call vote for this?
We need a second.
I think we did from Jim.
Did you second?
I will second.
Or did Sandra? Did you second it?
No, I think, no, Jim did.
You're authorizing additional funds and per your own rules you are required.
To do a roll call vote?
Because you're expending additional hours.
Okay. We'll start down at this end. Jim Thomas?
Yes.
Sandra Whalen?
Yes.
Colleen O'Brien?
Yes.
Mark Zappa? Joe Cawthorn, yes. Next item on the list is peddler's permit. Kay Martin of Weather Guard Construction requests for approval. Is that coming out of the plan commission?
You might want to comment on that, Chief.
I can't.
Is that in, is in the plan?
No, it's still in that section.
It's still on the front, okay, I thought I, all right, I thought I missed it.
You have in front of you the memo, just basically discussing, it should be along with the application, discussing the peddler's permit that Weather Guard Construction has brought forward. There was some discussion between the village attorney and myself regarding the wording of our ordinance and some of the issues that I will probably be bringing forward in future meetings regarding some of the, I guess, the cloudiness on what designates a person to be eligible for a permit and what keeps them from having a permit in the village of North Hudson. Basically, our ordinance, by memory, relates to reputation and background, and that's basically the verbiage that's in there. The applicant that's on this particular application does not have, in my opinion, a good reputation based on some criminal activity in that person's past, which very well is tied into the particular permit that he came to apply for. I can't go into details on it because of some privacy issues, but I can let you know that this permit is for door-to-door sales or door-to-door peddling, canvassing, those types of things. And the situation of going door-to-door is kind of where the issue relates back. And so, at this time, I've recommended to the board that we deny this particular applicant. I do know that Weather Guard Construction has talked to me and has applicants that they would like to put forward at the next, or they would like to put in an application for different people to come forward and do the same type of business, and they've explained to me that obviously their business is to try to help, I guess, our residents, those people that have had hail damage to their siding, to their roofing, all those types of things. And so, there is not an issue with the business itself, but the way that our ordinance reads, we have to look at the applicant, the person that they put forward as their representative. And in this particular circumstance, that applicant doesn't meet the criteria that the board has put forward for approval of those types of permits.
Okay, thank you. No questions. Do we have a motion on this application? Either approve or denial? What's that?
I'll move to deny the peddler's permit application of Kay Martin.
I will second that motion to deny the application.
Okay, motion has been made by Mark Zappa, seconded by Jim Thomas, to deny application for Weather Guard Construction.
Is anybody here on behalf of Weather Guard Construction?
Not appear to be.
I guess at this point.
Any discussion?
Oh, sir.
They can always come back and reapply and.
Use postal service.
And talk to the board in person, if that's what they want to do. Is there any other discussion on this? All those in favor, the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried to deny this application. The next item, number seven, is fireworks, fireworks permit application of M. Zappa of Village Fireworks, request for approval. And let's see, we actually have two applications, I think evidently, one is number seven, one's number eight. You'll see next on your packet, application to sell fireworks within the village of North Hudson. We've had two applications receiving requests to sell fireworks in the village. Applicant number one, Mark Zappa, Village Fireworks, located at 703 Sixth Street North. Public safety committee recommendation, sale of Class C legal fireworks only, and conditions is outlined on letter from police chief. Should I just go ahead and read the suggested motion? Move to approve the fireworks permit for Mark Zappa doing business as Village Fireworks, located at 703 Sixth Street North, starting on May 7, 2008, through May 6, 2009. Conditionally as shown on the applicants in the comments section, with onsite inspection to be performed by, to be performed by fire inspector David Kerpich. Further proof of liability insurance with the village being named as a certificate holder must be provided to the village before retail operations begin. And that is a suggested motion for applicant number one, and the Chair would entertain a motion to either approve or deny.
I would move that we approve.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve applicant number one, Mark Zappa, Village Fireworks, located at 703 Sixth Street North. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same sign, motion is carried. The second motion is to approve fireworks permit for Freedom Value Center, located at 702 Sixth Street North, starting on June 1, 2008, through May 31, 2009, with onsite inspection to be performed by fire inspector David Kerpich. Chair would entertain a motion to approve or deny this particular applicant.
I'll move that we approve.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve this motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same sign, motion is carried. Okay, we have an election inspector appointment, two-year term approval requested.
Appoint Jean Snyder, Democratic election inspector.
Okay, Mark Zappa moved to appoint Jean Snyder as Democratic election inspector for a term commencing on May 6, 2008, to December 31, 2009. Any discussion on that motion? All those, yes?
Is there just a brief background in us? We need to have one of these people? Have we had them in the past? I have no idea.
Every year, there were several that was approved on January 1 for that term. It just happens that sometimes we run low with vacations and stuff, so we need more Democratic inspectors, and she was willing to do it, and we said, you bet.
Good to me. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion is carried. Let's see, we come now to plan commission recommendations. Anybody from plan here tonight? Is anybody covering that?
No, Mike called and he would not be able to attend this evening.
Okay, and nobody's covering four?
No, he just asked, said that when they, basically, it's in their minutes also, but when they looked at this application, that they based it on what they perceived other, we had done with other.
Okay, is this application part of our activity this evening?
Yes. It's under Plan Commission B.
Okay, so we do have to cover that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so 10B, there's an amended conditional use permit for the village inn to install a patio, and approval has been requested. And do we have that? Is that under plan, or is that here? It's right here, okay. It's probably worthwhile reading what Snyder moved to recommend to the board, considering this conditional use permit, and so I'll read it here. Snyder moved to recommend approval to the village board of the amended conditional use permit, application for Lee and Diane Helverson doing business as Village Inn at 723 Sixth Street North, PIN number 161-1016-20-000, with the following conditions. Number one, hours of operation for patio area not to exceed the establishment's existing hours of application, 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM. Applicant must comply with all existing terms of his conditional use permit. Three, all operations shall comply with federal and state regulations, local ordinances, and fire codes. Four, fencing not to be less than six feet in height and not to be in conflict with the existing village fence ordinances. Three, the three memos in order, police chief Mark Richards dated 4/16/2008, the Cedar Corporation memo dated 4/16/2008, and the building inspectors memo dated 4/16/2008, that all recommendations and terms of those memos be implemented. Access to patio area as described in the sketch will be on the southwest corner of the patio, immediately to the north of the front door at the bottom of the stair. Patio size is not to exceed 16 by 38 as proposed in the sketch. Second by Mitchell, motion was carried. So that is essentially what I think we are talking about and what is being asked for And, you know, Mark, could we ask you to come to the podium and talk about your, if you have any comments about this? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
No, that's fine, I guess I don't have a.
Grant to help facilitate the discussion.
Sure, I don't have a lot to add. I've got a copy of it here. I don't have a lot to add other than what is in my memo. Basically, I was looking for the plan commission to take a look at the safety aspect of it, or I was asked to look at the safety aspect and gave my recommendations, and I think according to the minutes that I just heard, the six-foot fencing was one of my concerns based on intoxication, and it sounded to me, according to Lee, that there was a kind of a pointed top to it, and so we wanted to make sure it was high enough so that, you know, people weren't trying to climb over it or something, didn't fall and obviously injure themselves. And then the only other question that I had, and it sounds like it was also addressed by the plan commission, was where the entrance to the patio would be to make sure that there was some control as far as the bartender or the person that was in control of the establishment at any particular time, and it sounds like that's going to be in very close proximity to the actual entrance door. And so I think it sounds like, you know, those things have been addressed per my memo.
I'll move through to discussion.
Well, why don't we wait, if we don't get a second, then we're dead in the water. Okay, motion has been made and seconded and to accept this amended, application for amended conditional use by Village Inn. Excuse me. I guess, you know, if you've got some comments on it, please come to the mic and state your name and your concern.
Well, my name's Lee Helverson. I own, me and my wife, Diane, own the Village Inn. The height restriction at minimum of six feet. The sections of the wrought iron fence don't come in six-foot sections. I mean, I can, at additional expense, I can put extensions on, but I think, you know, they're five and a half feet. I think Mark's concern was people sitting on it or falling over the top of it or trying to climb in. My only, I just ask that we can drop that to five and a half feet. My only, I just asked that we can drop that to five and a half feet. That height restriction.
Okay.
I'll amend by, I don't see an issue with five and a half to six feet.
That's what the standard section's coming.
I'll amend my, I will like to amend the recommendation to fencing not be less than five and a half feet in height.
Lee, I do have a question.
Yeah, we, I think the board members may have some questions here. I may have one too, but you go ahead. Well, a question that I have is how will you maintain control of that area? Yes?
Amendment on the floor, you should see if this is...
Let me, let me get, let me amend the approval, if I may, to, so we don't have the six-foot height issue. I'd like to amend the recommendation that the fencing be not less than five and a half feet in height instead of six.
I would move that amendment be, do you need a move, motion for that?
I think second.
Second, I would second that. Seems amply high to me.
All right. That motion has been made and seconded. Do we need to vote on that? I suppose we do. All those in favor of that amendment, of the amendment again signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I think now we're open up for discussion or questions of Mr. Halverson by the board members.
Hello, by the way. With summer coming, I can definitely understand. I was looking through the plans on this and, you know, in trying to gain a little bit of a grasp how you get alcoholic beverages from the inside bar to the deck. You're not going to be serving outside. It looks as though you would, you'd come down that little concrete existing step and then on to the deck area. I'm assuming that those are basically the same height. So, you just step on the parking lot and then right back on to the deck?
Yeah, the slab of the patio is no higher than the black, existing blacktop that is there. We're removing the blacktop that's in that patio area and just filling it packed up with the concrete.
Is, just with the little bit that I know about the current zoning things, what have you, there's a lot of establishments in the village currently that have similar situations that try to maintain control of it. The only issue that I would see with this, and I think it's minimal, is that basically you'd have to come off of the stoop, step out into the parking lot and then go up into it. And I guess my question, you've got on here removable wrought iron, iron section, yeah, removable wrought iron section railing. I'm assuming basically that would be removed for the entire summer season? And that the south side would be open?
For the, for the winter.
Or for, okay.
Right.
So, that would be there. So, how do you gain access to this proposed patio then?
Okay, we did, on there, I think I showed, I don't know if I showed it or if it was just explained to the Planning Commission. It was in the notes there that we were going to have the, a gate, a swinging gate on the southwest corner of that patio. We were going to leave enough room from the step so you could step down and still have probably two feet from, from the actual steps where the gate would be. I may want to slide that gate more towards the middle of that, of that south piece of the fencing only because for wheelchair access, for them to have to go around the stoop there, that may be a little bit more difficult. So, instead of being right in the corner, depending on how the sections work out as far as the length of the sections and how we do that, if I, if I'm able to move that entrance more towards the east or somewhere in the middle there.
So, will this be handicap accessible then? Or with the fact that you have to go down?
Right, it's the same, it's the same level as the, as the current parking lot.
Okay, so it'll be just at that parking lot level?
Right.
What, you know, and I'm not here to suggest anything, but an issue that arises is with control, ultimately, you're going to have to, or we will, Village will have to amend your liquor license to include this area. And for ease of things, I potentially see an issue, or not an issue, but, but a solution to that if that concrete slab could be brought over or angled over so that it would cover any foot traffic area that would entail the carrying of alcoholic beverages to it to avoid having to walk across the blacktop. Not, not to, you know, have you spend any money. I mean, I've been through that there many, many times. But I'm just thinking for us as a village, we need to have a defined area to say that this will be the only area that alcohol is carried onto. And since you do have to step off of the concrete, step on to the parking lot level, it just leaves a little. Go ahead, Mark.
Editorialize for a second.
Please.
I've been through the Planning Commission process several times. I don't know if anybody else here has. Lee's gone through it. And I think at this stage, to be proposing construction changes and things like that, you missed an opportunity at the Planning Commission stage. I think it's kind of unfair for him to say after he's gone through this, then to come here and to be put through it again. The conditions that the Planning Commission came up with, we approved. So, I think it's a little bit of, I don't really condone board activity of getting back into the issue and making construction changes.
We have not approved those yet. We've had it made and seconded, and we haven't voted on.
But what I'm getting at is if...
Lee approved.
And I have this issue with the Planning Commission. If we're not going to go by the recommendation, why do we even have one? And it's been duly noted. And if there are concerns, that's when we as board members, as any other citizen, should be there so that the applicant, and there aren't many applicants in North Hudson because there isn't that much going on, doesn't have to go through too many hoops and meetings and questions and answering the same question over and over. I've been through it, and it gets kind of frustrating. So, I'm not trying to take any, wind out of your sails, Jim. I'm just saying, there has been a process he's gone through already with this. And I get a little concerned when we start bringing more concerns to these guys than, than he might have been prepared for. He's sat through the meeting with the Planning Commission, and that's their job to review it, make a recommendation to the board.
But we can still have questions.
Yes, we can. But I think Jim was leaning towards recommending a different type of construction.
Thank you very much. I'm, I appreciate that, and I'm with you. It's, it's very important that, that my viewpoint, I want this thing to go through, obviously. The issue is, is that once you step off of that stoop into the parking lot, it's, you know, there's no rules, regulations, or anything. And then, looking at the zoning thing, and I'm sure Planning looked through all the zoning codes and what have you. And it's, it's just an issue that, like on, on your building, for example, if it's possible to use, you've got a defined concrete area. Idaho Chucks has a defined concrete area under a cover. Everybody, and even Stars to the Greeks, except for their horseshoe pit, has a defined area. And this is so well-defined, except for that gap when you step off the step. And I, you know, it's probably not $100 more to do it that way, but just to have some kind of definition. And maybe I'm just...
Maybe you could do with paint, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe you could just do it with paint, just an area so that, once you step in the parking lot.
My question kind of goes along with that a little bit. And the question is, is how, how do you manage or control that area? Are you going to have a person out there all the time that, when people are out there? Or what happens?
You know, our, our standard, our waitresses. To me, I don't see it as being any different than any other room just because there isn't a roof over it.
I think the thing that Jim is alluding to is people wandering away from that area with a, with a, you know, can of beer in their hand and walking out into the parking lot, which is something that we don't want to happen.
Right.
So, how do you, how do you prevent that, control that, police that? And my question also is to Mark. I don't know if, if he sees that as being an issue or a problem. That's the only thing that I have, you know, an issue with this at all is, is that.
Can I address that same issue? When I do your license, I need to be able to define that area as Jim states. And it's kind of hard to define footprints from going down the steps to the left X amount of feet. Whereas if, I, I, I'm trying to visualize some way of stating it so that it would include a defined area. Because there's like a start and a stop. When your, your establishment stops, you go down the steps, and then this, this defined area that you presented starts again. It's between your door and the gate. How can, I think that...
You know, would it be like...
It should be continuous.
I, I think I'm with you. You know, maybe I'm just looking at this way too simply. But would it be possible to carry this little concrete area half a dozen feet more south so that you stay on that concrete area? Although the gate would be for his panel? No, please do, please do. And...
I believe, you know, we probably, we are going to come right up to the, we're going to come right up to the, up to the, up to the step.
Sure.
Because I don't want that blacktop piece in there. And I originally had thoughts of that stain, blacktop. But I think we'll just, we'll go all the way out to the, if this is a two-foot gap in here, I think we'll just shove it all out.
And would this area, and I have to apologize, I don't know if they can, they probably can't get this on the TV. But if that connected that area, is this enough room to get across? Or if this concrete was just carried down to here? And I'm, I'm not making recommendations. I don't want to do anything against Planning or anything. But if, if this was a definition that would make your life easier, Gloria, you know, is that something so that, you know, the gate can be here? But, you know, or, you know, just some area, so. And maybe, maybe that isn't it. Okay, I guess we do have a pretty good picture of it. Sorry, I didn't mean to drop that down. But if we were able to, and you can see this on the TV a little bit here. But so, what is being proposed, this little gap here is connecting this to the existing step. But at that point, if I understand you right, Gloria, you would technically, in a perfect world, have to walk over this way and not step into the parking lot with beverages. If this could somehow just be, you know, made into an area that would be easier to define by Gloria? And, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to make your life tough at all.
And it's not really making my life easier. It's more of a state statute says that the area of service storage has to be defined on the license. And I don't know, Bill, do you have anything?
Yeah, what I'd like to know is why did, why doesn't the Planning Commission know this stuff?
Because they, they may not, they don't address the alcohol license side of it. They're addressing the conditional use part of it.
Come down and get a conditional use to do that.
Well, the only other thing I...
I don't mean to argue with it. My, my beef is with process a little bit. I mean, you, you sit through there, and if they, if they're issuing a recommendation that doesn't include all the factors, that leaves it up to us, for example, Jim, to catch it. You know, I, to me, it's...
I don't know the answer to that.
More reason to just ignore half this stuff that goes on.
Is Planning, do, are they privy to go through all the zoning, the liquor license?
Geez, I think so.
I don't know. Okay, they are supposed to?
They say they do. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, no, I certainly do. Yeah, it seems a...
And my, my point is not to make it difficult for Mr. Halverson as, as a proprietor. The thing that I keep thinking about, and I know it's happened within the village, is people have had a, had a violation or have been processed with a violation for having an open container when they walk out of one of our establishments here. And, and, you know, unfortunately, it gets to be a surprise. And so, my, you know, my question is, is, is it would be nice if it was managed in some way or clear to the patrons as to, you know, where they can be drinking. And I don't, you know, I don't know about a concrete slab needing to be extended. I think, you know, a, a, a line of whitewash there that would indicate the same thing, or maybe some signage. Now, that's all I'm bringing up is, is, is for you to help your, your patrons so that they don't get in trouble. I, I just don't want anybody having a problem.
Are you talking the consumption or the transportation of?
I would guess both.
Carrying...
Both.
I mean, carrying beverage off that area versus consuming it off the step.
Well, I'm not so sure you can carry it across the parking lot if it's open. Right?
Just because you asked for my, my...
Yeah, please.
Came up to kind of help out, because I think we can probably abbreviate a lot of this.
Great.
If, if there is a way that we can define it, that would be obviously beneficial. Because then Lee even could say, for instance, if that area is all concrete and the rest of it's blacktop in that area, very, very easily, a little sign could be put up at the doorway that says, you know, do not, do not go off concrete with an open container. He's then covered his liability, as far as I'm concerned, that those people that are in there over the age of 21, they're adults. If they make the decision then to step off the concrete into the parking lot, go to their cars, walk down the street, that's their own personal, he, he can't control that. He, he's made a statement that, "We're telling you, don't go off the concrete. We're telling you, don't go outside of the gated area," whatever that case may be. And then, it's up to us to make that determination on what we're going to do from there. But I think, so we don't make it very difficult for him. He's trying to create a nice space out there. And if it meets all the rest of the criteria, I think we can work with how to implement, you know, the, the controls. I think that's something that he probably already has thought about. And maybe just because of some of these little things that are being brought up, I, I think that that's something that we can, we won't have a problem with. Because if they are adults and they make the step off, then we treat them as an individual. We don't, we're not going to go after the bar then or after the establishment and say, "Hey, you let someone walk off your premise." That's not how it works. It's, they're adults, and they can make their own decisions, so.
I don't have a problem with putting the pavement down or the asphalt, concrete out as far as...
Yeah, whatever, whatever works for you. Like Mark said, we're trying to just be able to have you, as owners, have definition and the ability to control it. People don't just meander out into the lot and around and...
Then, then I, I'll do what you outlined here and in front of that concrete stoop going into the building. There was one reason I didn't want to do that because eventually I want to put a two-door, I'm going to apply for...
A vestibule?
Yeah.
A vestibule?
Yeah, something like that. So, there's two doors that go in into the building. So, it's not open the door and all the cold air rush in. So, I didn't really want to put concrete there at this time because to try and use that and build an addition on the front there.
You could, if you did the addition, you could have one door going out the front and one out the side.
Yeah, that'd be beautiful.
To your patio.
Are you thinking of doing that in the next year or something? Because then, would paint be, would suffice, Mark?
For now. If he wants to get it taken care of.
Okay, I'm convinced that you guys have a good handle on it.
If I could find that for now, paint, that would be, use that. Julie, recommend what color paint?
If it's on asphalt, can we make it black?
Well, we don't want to get confused with parking spaces.
I'm certainly not trying to make it difficult. We want this to go through. It's just for...
Right, I needed that definition so that we could put it on his license.
Yeah. Do we need to modify this motion at all? Okay, we have a motion that's, do we?
No.
Okay.
Shouldn't it have something stating that the area will be defined?
But that's when you do the license. That's part of the license.
Start to get done then.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded, and we've discussed it fully. And the area can be delineated in the license itself, so Gloria can work with you on that. I don't know if there's any other discussion on this or not, but...
I'm fine.
I'm going to take it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Everybody's comments?
Thanks, Lee.
Finance Committee recommendations, claims. And for those of you who were thinking that we met at 6:00, we did not because we did not have a quorum. But we as a board should probably approve the claims that you see in the, in the finance section. And it's suggested board motions, and I think I can make this, to approve the April 2008 non-recurring claims totaling $60,370.41. Those, that's my motion. Those, that's my motion. Those claims are shown in the following five or six pages after that. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve these claims. Is there any discussion on any of them? Anybody have any questions on those? Is there anything, Gloria, that you think is specifically significant?
No, they were, it was kind of outlined on the background.
Okay.
Some of the final payment to Elliott Architects.
Those are the big ones, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, let's see, is this motion to spend money? Do we need to do a roll call vote? Take it down here first, Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Colleen. Sandra?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
And Joe says yes. Motion is carried. Public Works Committee. The only thing, I do have something that I want to bring up, and I do have a motion for it. You'll see in the packet, kind of an issue statement with some background. And I also have a handout here. Send one of these down to Mark, take one. I don't know how many we got. And much of this is with Kevin Oyam's help from Cedar Corporation. And to give you a background is, the board has asked the Public Works Committee to make recommendations about what to do with that park, parking space, or space across the street where the old maintenance building was. And so we've been looking at it for some time, trying to figure out what we could do with it, what we should do with it, what some potential uses for it are. And actually, they're listed in the issue statement, and it could be used as just general unused space in the village. First, second of all, we could use it as a parking space. We could put a parking lot in there of some size, or, of some size. It could be used as park space, putting some of the equipment that we had, or some new equipment that we had where the new building is over there, if that's something that we want to do. The other thing that one of the committee members was thinking about is, is that could be an asset for the village, and it's not with our existing site ordinances, there'd have to be some variances that would be approved. But it's potentially a building site, we think. It's not a huge building site, but something could go in there, perhaps a twin home or something like that, or, something like that. And so there's a potential asset to the village where we could sell that to somebody that wanted to develop it. So those are kind of the five areas. And I wanted to talk a little bit about parking space, first of all. According to village ordinance, it states that commercial buildings need a parking space for every 200 square feet of building, square footage. And according to Kevin Oyam, this implies we need 42 parking places, according to, you know, the building space that we have in our ordinances. And the estimates of the cost of providing this kind of off-street parking varies from a low of around $1,500 a stall or space to roughly $3,000 a space, or perhaps a little more. One of the things that I, and this is my, this is my opinion, and it might be shared by others, and speak up if you do or don't agree. I don't think that we need 42 spots here for off-street parking. That seems to be excessive. We may need some, and I've done my own little assessment of what we have. And I have it someplace here. It looks to me like we have roughly 30 parking places, which is a combination of parallel parking, for the most part, 26 places along both sides of the street here. And then there are four spaces for off-street parking, two the police department uses, and then there's two handicap slots that are just off the street, that are perpendicular parking, if you will. But there's parallel parking for roughly 26. So we have a total of 30 that is available to us. So you have to ask the question, do we need more parking places? More parking spaces? And what is the reason for that? Before the village would, you know, make that kind of a cost, or approve that kind of a project? I, and so I'm kind of open and up to a discussion from the board members that are here, because, you know, it depends on board members and staff members that are here. You know, what is the reason for providing off-street parking? And, you know, there's aesthetic reasons. It's kind of nice to get people off the street and kind of keep it open and clean. But we don't have a lot of traffic along here, anyway. I personally think that it would be helpful to particularly the lot owner directly across the street if people were not parking in front of his house all the time, which can happen. I don't know about it all the time, but frequently there's cars parked out in front of his, his or her lot across the street. And there's another lot on the corner, but it faces the other way. But I don't think we need 42. We have 30. It's gonna cost anywhere from $1,500 to $3,000 of space to do that. And my question to everybody here, and I don't want to, I don't want to open it up for a long, for an extensive discussion, but, you know, what does anybody think? I asked the police chief and Mark Echblad, or whatever, you know, to, your thoughts, so that we have it as part of the discussion and part of the record. Does anybody have any comments about that?
We talked about that at the park board meeting also. And at the time, we thought that we had to have some off-street parking. And we didn't, we thought, you know, like four or five at the south, south end. And then some green space, and then space for a small playground, since the playground equipment was removed when the village hall addition was added. So it kind of goes with some of his ideas that Joe's already recommended. And that's what we had discussed, is having some green space and a small playground. And parking if we had to.
You know, Gloria, or Mark, or, Mark, you know, I don't, you guys are around here all the time. The rest of us are not. We're around here frequently. But, you know, is there a safety issue that we have with the, I guess, Mark, is there a safety issue that you have with any of the, you know, parking that we now have?
I don't believe that there's any safety issues that I can play by.
Okay. You know, is there any, you know, it seems to me, you know, parallel parking, the benefits of parallel parking are, you don't get door dings, for those of you who are concerned about that. You know, classic car, interesting people, and I know one at the far corner is probably one of those people. But, and I don't know, is there any safety issue when you, when you, when you're right next to the road and you have a perpendicular slot, like we now have for the police cars? Is there an issue, I know we have that downtown by the, by the park, and by the lakefront park down there, but, you know, backing out into the street and turning and going, we just don't have that much traffic here. So I don't think any way that we park on this street would seem to be acceptable and just about as safe as any other method, I would think. But are you following my question?
Because the cable people like us to be in front of the microphone. I think any parking situation, you're gonna be able to find some fault, some area that you could say, "Yes, this is a safety hazard, this is a safety hazard." The only thing about parking on a street is obviously when you open your door into traffic, and you have to step out, or if you have children, a parking lot obviously is gonna create a controlled environment where there probably isn't 25 mile per hour vehicles going by. Am I gonna stand up here and tell you that the village should go one way or the other? Absolutely not. As an employee, I'm not gonna say that. But as far as the safety aspect of it, a parking lot is more safe than the street, as far as that goes. But beyond that, I don't have an opinion on how it's gonna go.
How many accidents do we have to get in the last 10 years over there?
On that street, I don't have the data in front of me, but I've been here eight, and I don't think I can recall any.
I believe I would beat this thing down. How many more people work here since we put the addition on?
Are you asking this question?
Yeah, none, right? Same amount?
Actually, probably less, to tell you the truth.
What use has changed? And now we're talking about parking spots, like it's a, it was never an issue before?
Are you looking for motion here, Joe?
No, no, I'm just looking for comments and discussion.
That is a comment, and a discussion.
I guess because...
Jim, if you want to talk, you can talk up here at the mic. But give us your name and where you live.
I'm Jim Beakel, live next door, 404 Sixth Street. I take and send watches, the cars that are parked there every day, the village workforce, they park their trucks and whatever, come in. And I don't know, seemed like nobody liked to park the street. It seemed like everybody wants to park the parking lot. Now, I don't know if that's your preference, or, but I see basically all the workers, all the work crew, they always pull in and park in the parking lot. To me, to me, I don't quite understand why you want to do away with the off-street parking when you already have it. And then you're parking on the street, you're narrowing up the street. I see, I see every day, there's six, eight cars, or whatever, parked, you know, off the street in the parking.
Yep. So you said we kind of, since we, since we took the building down, we've kind of fallen into the habit of using that area as parking.
I understand that. But it's, but before the village trucks parked in the village, along the shop.
Yep.
But now they come in, sometimes you see three trucks, or whatever, parked off-street, or whatever. I see it every day. I mean, I, that's my, that's my opinion. I, I don't...
And you don't see anything wrong with that?
I would prefer the off-street parking.
Okay.
That's my, that's my opinion.
Okay.
We already have it. I don't understand why, other than the cost of putting in, I mean, it's...
But we don't really have off-street parking. We have a space that has to be fixed up yet.
You're gonna fix it one way or the other.
Well, there's additional cost if we ask for it.
We spend the money now or spend it later, whatever. That's my opinion.
That's assumed, yeah.
Let's do it right the first time, or then we'll back after, back and have to redo it.
Yeah, we can talk about, let me, let me talk about some of the options that you see on here. I don't know if anybody else has a comment, from Jim's or not. Jim, or, Mark, were you gonna say something?
I guess the only comment I have, is I do agree with Jim. I believe we should have some off-street parking. Number one is, all the staff that works here at the village hall should be off-street. I know during, especially during the winter months, it's, it is a pain. And then Gloria can tell you, we, we're out there plowing, and some plow a couple times a day, and we have to tell them all, move your vehicles one side of the street or the other. With that lot there, it is so much easier. We go plow that thing in the morning, they park in there, we plow during the days. You know, it's, that's just my opinion. Plus, I see, like Jim, I see how much that is being used. Anything else, and I would recommend that we at least put, you know, eight to 10 spots of off-street parking in that lot.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Anybody else have comments?
Sure.
Before I get into the options.
Well, one thing that I wanted to remind, and it's in the book, is regarding the conditional use criteria that we were given with the construction of the village hall. And one of it was to address the parking requirements. And what the answer to that is, I, you know, it depends on the board. But I do appreciate having an area, especially during elections, when I have a lot of residents that come in. I notice that the people that have a harder time getting in and out of their vehicles are able to park in the front on the street, and the people that are able to motivate more are, can use that parking lot. I guess that's my, my comment on it.
Okay. Well, just so, in front of you is, there's a spreadsheet for Plans A, B, C, and D. Let me just go through them for those of you who don't have it, and the public, general public that's viewing this. Plan A is really to grass only, that area across the street, basically level it and put grass in it, and put a split rail fence on the north and east sides. That cost is $6,000. And at a minimum tonight, I think what I'm getting at is that we should approve that expenditure and get that going, because now is the time to plant grass seed and get it leveled. If we combined that with adding 10 to 11 parking places, either on the north side of that lot, or the south side of the lot, depending on what the park board wants to do in installing a split rail fence, that will add about another $8,500 to $9,000 to the project. So it costs, you know, roughly, you know, $1,000 for each parking spot that we would put over there. If, yeah, let's see, why do I have that here? Grass and parking, oh. One of the things that we talked about in Plan C was using a barrier fence, which is, which is what is there now, and replacing that. But that's a very expensive fence, and it's about $7,000 to put that up on two sides of that lot. So that adds another $7,000 and brings the total cost of that project up to 20, almost $22,000. One of the other options that we, we were considered, and Kevin has helped us with that, is to remove the warming house and put a pedestal out there for the electricity that the Pepperfest uses. And then adding seven kind of perpendicular parking spots in that space, and coupled with a sidewalk across that to the village hall. That cost would be $23,000. But again, one of the things that you should, I need to note about that is although it looks like we add seven parking spots, right now, you can put four cars along there in parallel parking. So the net gain is three or four cars at most, at a cost of $23,000. So that gets quite high, if you look at it on a per-car basis. The other thing that I, I just made an estimate today, and this is my own estimate, Kevin, I didn't talk to you about this. But if we did a similar thing to the north of the village, if we had room here, and, and put like 12, 12 to 13 parking places where we could, from here to the end of the block, I'm estimating it would be about $17,000 to do that, based on kind of a percentage thing that Kevin had in his first estimate. To me, those are the options. I mean, we don't have any land other than what we've got. We've got the land across the way, we've got this land. If we're gonna put parking, off-street parking, it's gotta be one of those three areas. And I'll be honest with you, I don't think that we're going to reach a decision on if we need off-street parking or not tonight, or how many spaces that we do need. I truthfully think it would be beneficial for the people who live across the street not to have parking there during the day, just so their residence could be similar to what else is available in the village. And the idea of having off-street parking probably the cheapest per lot is doing it in the old maintenance building lot. And so that's, I think that's where we're at. But my recommendation is going to be, is going, and I'm gonna prepare this motion now, is to recommend that the board approve up to $6,000 for the restoration of the old maintenance building site to include excavation, topsoil, seed, mulch, and a split rail fence. We want the board to authorize that, so we can at least get moving on it. I think we can have further discussions on if we really do need parking places and where we want those at a later date. One of the things that, that you should note is, is we only had $10,000, I think, approved for this reclamation of that site. And anything, you know, any Plan B, C, D, or E is more than the 10. So we'd have to look at our budget and see what available funds are, that we could use for that. But that is my motion. I would appreciate a second.
Do we need a second to talk about it?
Yeah.
A second?
Did you second? Mark Zappa seconded.
Could we touch base with Kevin real quick? Would you mind just answering two questions? If we did the $6,000 thing, and I agree, this is the time of the year to plant grass seed, and I walked in here after reading this, thinking, "Yeah, that sounds great." But my God, it sounds like we need parking. And to me, you're gonna have to go through there, tear up the soil, get some, you know, topsoil down, plant the seed. Isn't it gonna cost more to come back two months later and put down more Class 5, which we already basically have there? we already basically have there, and then do blacktop? Would it make sense financially and just eken, you know, all the way through to just put in 10 spots and get it over with? Or...
I think there'd, yeah, there'd be additional dollars if you would, you know, if you did go in and put a restoration in there now and then come, come in at a later date and put the asphalt down. You know, I don't think it's anything major.
Be specific. What would it be? Regardless of what you have out there right now, you gotta dig out the subgrade and put in crush rock. All right?
Yeah.
The only, the marginal difference would be the topsoil and the seed, and the seed in there on the area.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that would be the lost cause. Either way, you gotta come in, get this graded up, remove the subgrade, 'cause we don't, you're still gonna, if you go down four, six inches, you gotta put crush rock in there and haul out the sand. So we're moving a little topsoil and a little grass that was planted. The grass seed throughout the door, that's not that much more. You'll, you'll have some topsoil to get rid of, which you'll probably use to work around the parking lot anyway, if you put it in. My issue isn't, what bothered me with this is, is I'm not against the parking, I just wanna get something going. And we've said it clearly at Public Works that let's address it, let's get it grasped, see how the use is. And as you can see, this parking thing is more money, and it's somewhat of a separate issue at this point. I believe we just get it in, see how it's being used, and there isn't that much of a lost cost to do the parking area later.
And like I said, when I started out here, it's my, I came in here thinking, let's get grass seed in it and take some time, but, and thank you, because I thought maybe we're looking at a $2,000, $3,000 difference, so...
No, I don't think it's...
We're not even looking at $1,000.
It's not a big dollar amount.
Okay, yeah, okay. That's, that, that's very clear. I didn't realize that you couldn't just go over that, that you had to dig all that, that out and put Class 5 in, so, yeah.
You would have to dig back up.
That makes sense.
You would have to dig the black soil back up to be like...
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta get this graded up. Are you gonna lay the asphalt down what's existing out there right now?
No.
No. So I mean, you're still preparing it. And rather than debate this and, and, and do something, and we gotta get money for it, and then we watch another summer go by, that's my concern. I'm fully prepared to address the parking when we need, and I, and we probably do need some parking over there. I, I'm not disputing that. I'd just like to get this done, 'cause I think I've been clear at the Public Works meeting is that let's get a year under our belt and address it next spring perhaps. Or if it becomes a real issue later on, and just address it as a parking issue. Leave the, you know, it's turned into warming house, park, you know, playground equipment and many other things.
Well, it's my belief that we need parking out there, but, you know, to get things going, if that's what you're really looking for, let's at least get it graded and get some grass seed down. If everybody can assure me it's not gonna cost the village residents more than $500 or $1,000 to take the time necessary to put together the proper plan, I, I think that makes sense.
You can even get it prepped and prep, you can even get it graded out in preparation for that.
And that would be a...
If the layout is such, you know, during construction, figure out where some spots are gonna be and grade it accordingly, so when you come in, the rest of the thing's laying out accordingly. I, it's not that large a deal.
And I think it is generally accepted. We do need some parking, from what Mark said about the plowing and, you know, Mark said also about the safety, just, it's, it's...
Well, the other aspect is we require it of any other building.
Right, exactly. We have to follow the several...
I don't mean to be, I just would like to see us do something here before it hits June.
And I think Mr. Beagle has been pretty patient, 'cause he's been in here for quite a while trying to get an answer.
Well, are either of these spots with the 10 parking spots or 11 parking spots, are they like, like final, is that work? I mean, is that where you would ultimately like to see this go?
I'm comfortable leaving up with Public Works, it'd at least get a pinpoint area where, you know, of an area they'd like to do. But again, I view that as a separate, separate issue.
I think, I think Parks is saying that we should park on the south side of that lot, though, right?
See, I think it's too far from the building.
That's what you would like?
That, the playground across from the hall.
And I think the, the plans that Kevin drew up are all on the north side, 'cause that's what I told him to do. But...
You know, with doing some stuff on the north side, there, you know, the curb entrance would have to be redone too, because where it sits now, it's, it wouldn't line up with the, the new layout of the parking, the parking lot, so, you know, there's some dollars down the road for that. But if you're just gonna put it in the grass for now, I mean, it's, you could just leave it till it's in there now.
Just leave it. That's our plan, yeah.
Let's get some grass in there.
Yeah, the only other, other comment I have is although we've included money in, in here for a split rail fence, the decision to put a split rail fence or a barrier fence is, I feel is gonna be some sort of dialogue between the village and, and Public Works, if you will, and perhaps the Pepperfest. I'm not willing to spend our public money to put in anything more than, at least I'm not willing, to put anything more in that area other than a split rail fence. If somebody, mainly the, the Pepperfest feels because of security and that sort of thing, when they have that convention that we always have in, in the, in the early fall here, i- if we need a barrier fence there, then...
Has that been expressed to you as an issue?
Uh, it's been brought up at Public Works.
By anybody from Pepperfest?
No.
Okay.
No, has not. It's just been a...
I'm gonna speak on, I, I put up fence there for 20 years. I don't put in the snow fence. We ran it all over, over everywhere. That little section of being snow fence with fence posts, it goes up and it comes down.
Okay.
So I don't think it's a concern to the Pepperfest about putting a permanent security-type fence up there. That particular area isn't more susceptible than anything than any other part, so...
So they could manage it with what we'd have with a split rail?
Yeah, we throw up a lot more snow fence than that.
Okay. Well, I was just thinking, be thorough, it would make sense for maybe Mark to talk to somebody on the Pepperfest committee and just let them know what we're doing.
Imagine it to some people.
Okay. So, we do have a, a motion that's been made and seconded to approve $6,000 for the restoration of the old maintenance building site, to include a split rail fence, and we've had a discussion on it. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion is carried. That's all we had for Public Works. Public Safety? George is not here, obviously. Mark, do you have any comments?
Just the two motions that we...
Okay.
The Colleen and Mark from the...
Could you lead us in that discussion?
Sure.
'Cause I haven't turned the page.
Uh, which is the first that's on the agenda? I don't have an agenda.
Uh, speed sign request for approval.
Speed sign, okay. What you have in front of you is an issue statement, basically during the, the budgeting process for 2000, or during 2007 for 2008, we set aside $2,000 to go toward a, the purchase of a speed sign. That speed sign would be not attached to a trailer per se, although it could be, because we do have a trailer that the village owns that we could equip to hold this particular speed sign. But it's a speed sign that would, not unlike the ones on Vine Street, as you go out near the YMCA, it's very similar to that, except for that one is hardwired into the electrical system out there and, and not movable. This would be a removable sign that we could put in various places throughout the village. It's got adaption, or adapters that we can set up to different types of poles, 'cause we have several complaints throughout the village on the speed on different streets. So we would try to address those as we basically would prioritize that. This particular sign, it came in a little bit more expensive than we, what we had originally looked at. It's in the neighborhood of $3,895. And so to cover the, the difference, I've written into our grant that we've been approved for through the state bureau, it's the Department of Transportation Bureau of Transportation Safety, our card grant that the, the department gets primarily every year for alcohol compliance. One of the items that you can purchase with the money, or some of the monies from that grant are equipment, and it is an approved equipment for a speed sign. So with that being said, we budgeted the $2,000, and basically, we're gonna use up to $2,000 of our grant monies to help purchase this sign. You can see on the issue statement, I've laid out some of the interesting, variety of ways we'd be able to use this sign, and I think it's gonna be very helpful for us. And we've had some discussions in public safety about the fact that officers can't be everywhere at, at every time, and this basically puts another set of eyes and, and kind of a, an enforce, not necessarily an enforcement, but an educational piece out there for the village as far as how many, you know, you're, you're able to check your speed. And I can promise you that you take notice when you are driving along and you realize that you're going a little bit faster than maybe you should be. So hopefully, we'll get some education out of that. So my recommend, motion was to approve the purchase of the All Traffic Solutions Speed Sentry Bundle utilizing grant funds and budgeted amount not to exceed $4,000.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to approve the purchase of the All Traffic Solutions Speed Sentry Bundle utilizing grant funds and budgeted amount not to exceed $4,000. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Spending?
Spending.
Oh, it's spending, I'm sorry. Roll call, Mark?
Aye.
Colleen?
Yes.
Sandra? Jim? Phil Cuthbert, yes, motion is carried. Uh, second item is staffing and organizational chart. Mark?
Basically, this item is, is just an opportunity for me to have an organizational structural chart for the department, which mimics what we have as far as the budget from 2008 and the union contract. We had taken a look at some ways to try to alleviate some of the issues that we have in the department as far as the staffing and the workload. And one of the things that we have done is, in the union contract for the patrol officers, there is now a classification of a detective, which was not previously there, and all of the, the rights and rules behind that detective. And so in looking at the previous department structure, the detective or the investigation assignment fell under the police patrol sergeant. It was considered one of our officers that we then assigned to that particular job and duties, and then we had a part-time detective. Because some of that has changed, I would just like to get approval for the department structure to look as the proposed department structure that you have in front of you, which basically pulls the detective out of that patrol-based section and leaves it as its own job classification, which has, is basically under the supervision of the police chief instead of the patrol sergeant. And it is still a union-level position, but it is broken down and, and is, is consistent with what's in the union contract.
I'll move approval. Proposed department structure chart.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, made by Mark Zappa and Colleen O'Brien, seconded it, to approve the chart. All those in favor of the suggested motion signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Posed? Public welfare. Thank you, Mark. Is there anything else?
Public welfare did not meet last month. I did take a tour of Waste Management's recycling facility, met with the powers that be to try to get a single stream back on track, and we will work forward going, going forward on that. That's really pretty much all I have to report at this point.
Park Board?
Well, we've already covered the one item across the street. And the only other thing that's not listed in our, you can read in the minutes, is Joe last month had asked if I could bring up to the park board, talking about the warming house. And so I brought that up, and there was, the park board members felt that it was worthwhile to keep the warming house and to try to use it more, assuming we have a decent winter where you can have a good skating rink, and to, just to maintain that. And so we were going to recommend that the village board approve the continued use of the warming house and maintain the, the skating rink. I know the past few years it hasn't worked, just because the weather hasn't been cooperative, but, but the park board members felt that if it was a, a well-maintained rink, that it would get used, and the warming house would be a nice addition for that. They also said that, there are some people from, who live nearby, who said that you could probably also get volunteers to help flood it if it was an issue that Public Works Department didn't have enough time to do it. In fact, one of the park board members said he'd come down and do it. So I was just gonna recommend that we approve maintaining the warming house building and to maintain a skating rink in Pepperfest Park during the winter months.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to maintain the building as a heating skating facility, and effort, every effort made to maintain the ice skating potential of the rink. Is there any discussion on that? Question that I have is, do we really need a motion for something that we are doing as a ongoing part of the business?
It was just brought up.
Yeah, I think we can make it part of our, if we, if we make it part of our discussion or a discussion of, of the park board, but it would mean you'd have to withdraw your motion. But I, just to comment, you know, I don't know that we're approving anything. We're not disapproving anything either.
Yeah, we don't need a motion there.
It's nice to have some park volunteers, I mean, glad to help out.
Yeah, sure.
And maybe if these park volunteers wanna do some of the upkeep, you know, cleaned up a little bit, would that be an awesome thing? But I don't know if that even needs a motion.
Well, I didn't, I didn't have that, so...
Okay, so you were throwing your motion? Okay. Okay. All right. Uh, let's see, New Business from the Boarder Staff President's comment. There's an appointment for Plan Commission member David Ortner.
I'm sorry, there's no information. Yeah, you should look at his...
Okay, so we'll have to take that next time. What's that?
You can still...
We can still do it? Is there any, anything in here?
No, but you can make a motion, I still...
But it's, so, we're just, we just, we need another Plan Commission member, and Dan Ortner, O-R-T-N-E-R, has been, is recommended by the president, is filling that position.
I'll move approval of that recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Dan Ortner as a Plan Commission member. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion is carried. Do you have any comments?
Just thank everyone for attending our open house. It was a very nice turnout. We had about 120 people. I got to visit with people. Usually I'm in such a hurry that I don't get to, to have that opportunity, so it was very nice.
Okay. At this time, I think we are, we need a motion to convene and to close session. That's still on the table, still on the agenda. So our chair would entertain a motion to convene and to close session per paragraph 1985, one F to reconsider denial of application for operator's license.
So I think that's by roll call.
That's gotta be by roll call? Okay. Mark?
Aye.
Jim? Sandra?
Yes.
Colleen? Okay. Thank you all for coming, and we're now in closed session, yes?